The meeting open. Before we proceed, I'd like to remind everybody, in accordance with the council's code of meeting practice, other than the public forum section, this meeting is being livestreamed. The acknowledgement of country and prayer of council will be read by Pastor Claudio Olyssy from the Living Grace Christian Church, and that will be followed by the national anthem. If you could all please be upstanding.
Before we begin proceedings, we would like to acknowledge the traditional custodians of the land on which we meet and their ancestors, past and present, the Karabial clan of the Durrug nation. I also acknowledge that this land was accessed by peoples of the Durrug and Durrug nations. We affirm our hope and dedication to the good government of our city and the well-being of all of Liverpool's residents, no matter their race or creed. Tonight, we affirm our hope for sound decision-making by council, which will improve the quality of life in our city. We express our expectations and best wishes for Australia, our nation's future, the mayor, councillors and staff council, and all those associated with good government in Liverpool. Father God, we just thank you for tonight. We just pray your goodness over this city. We thank you for such a multicultural city. We just pray that you give us such a greater heart for this city, a love for this city, and that it can be the best city that you ever intended it to be. So we thank you for that, and we all say amen. Amen.
Thank you. Could all be seated. We don't have any apologies, so everybody is here. Any condolences? Confirmation of the minutes?
Move that way. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, councillor.
I'll second, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, councillor. I'll put it, those in favour, those against, carried. Declarations of interest?
I will declare a non pecuniary less than significant in compo 4. Procedurally, I don't know how this works, but I'll make a brief statement if I'm allowed, and then I will leave for the remainder of that item.
Okay. I too have a non pecuniary less than significant interest in compo 4. I'll be leaving the room. Okay, any other?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I have two. One to do with the committee, the Australia Day Awards, and I can't think of what number it is.
Sorry, what was it?
Compo 3. Compo 3, thank you. And the other one, QWN.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any others?
Yes, Madam.
No, go on. Councillor Caliander?
Yes, I too would like to declare an interest in compo... It's the same item, Australia Day Awards, non pecuniary less than significant, and I will stay in the room.
So compo 3?
Yep, compo 3.
Okay, councillor Rhodes?
Yes, I have a non pecuniary less than significant in nom 02, the motion that I'm putting up. I was re-elected treasurer of that particular committee that I serve on. I also have a declaration for the CTT, sorry? Oh, one, the minutes of the Tourism and CBD Committee.
Mm-hmm.
I'm not a member of that committee, I'm just there as an observer, but it's a matter that I need to address, and it is a pecuniary matter. I have no financial interest in South West Sydney Tourism Task Force. I do need to stay in the meeting to give some information. I will do that, and I will not vote on the matter. The next one is CONF04. I have a interest in that particular motion, that particular matter, and it is non pecuniary, and I will do the same as everybody else, stay in the meeting to give any advice, and then leave and not participate in the voting.
Thank you. Any others? Thank you. All right, public forum, excuse me. The first speaker is Mr John Anderson, who will address council on the Moorbank Intermodal Freight Hub.
Madam Mayor, the Liverpool councillors, ladies and gentlemen.
Thank you, Mr Byrne. Do we have any...? No, we don't have any other items. Now, we have two merrill minutes. One is an urgent one, which I will deal with first, and I'll read it out. I'm not sure, did you get a copy of them? No, I'll read it out, too.
It's on the screen.
Oh, good. Urgency motion, International Kempo Martial Arts Academy Proprietary Limited lease arrangements. International Kempo Martial Arts Academy has been operating in Liverpool for the past 40 years and are a longstanding leasee of the Hall of Bill Anderson Reserve, Kemps Creek. To clarify the status of the lease with the International Kempo Martial Arts Academy Proprietary Limited, which will expire on the 31st of December 2019, I move, as a matter of urgency, that council, one, confirm its commitment to offer a three-year lease extension to the International Kempo Martial Arts Academy Proprietary Limited as the longstanding leasee of the Hall at Bill Anderson Reserve, Kemps Creek. Two, an extension should be granted from the 1st of January 2020 to the 31st of December 2022 on the same terms as those contained in the current lease, including rent reviews. Exempt this lease from tender requirements under Section 553E of the Local Government Act 1993, as term of the lease is less than five years. I move that.
Mayor, sorry, just quickly, can I declare, now that that's up, a non pecuniary less than significant interest?
Mm-hmm.
My children train at IMC, not at that one, no dealings with that one. I pay the rates, just like every other parent. So, non pecuniary, less than significant, and I'll stay here.
I just need to make an amendment. I think 2022, the 31st of December 22 is two years.
No, that's three years.
Is it? Twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two?
Twenty-one, twenty-two.
Twenty, twenty-one?
That's three years, that's three years.
Ah, because it's a full year.
Yeah, because it's a full year.
Sorry, I put, yep, okay. Thank you. Any other speakers?
No, but I will congratulate you, Mayor, on bringing this to the attention of council. I won't go into too much detail, because obviously that's something else, but congratulations on doing this.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, I'm happy to second.
It's all right, you don't have to.
Sorry, I didn't know.
No, that's okay, that's okay. All right, I'll put it...
Question, Madam Mayor.
Yes, councillor Sheldon?
Are they paying a market rent, or what's the basis of the existing rent? I'm not overly fast, just curious as to what it is that's being continued on.
Yep. Ask the CEO.
But yes, they pay a market rent for that facility.
And they also look after the facility themselves. Okay, I'm going to put it, those in favour, those against, carried unanimously? Yes, yes, okay, thank you. The next one is a merrill minute relating to libraries. Renewal of our libraries phase two. The New South Wales Public Libraries Association Renew Our Libraries Funding Campaign secured 12.95 million increase in grants and subsidies, funding from the New South Wales Libraries in the 2019 to 2020 budget, the largest single increase of funding since the introduction of the Library Act in 1939. The average increase in state funding contributions paid to New South Wales councils for expenditure on library services in 2019-20 is 72.9%, more than the 2018-19 funding. This positive outcome is thanks to the efforts of more than 80% of New South Wales councils, ours included, to support the Renew Our Libraries campaign. New South Wales Pla recently relaunched Renew Our Libraries Phase Two, focusing on the future sustainability of library funding through cost of living indexation and protection via inclusion of the new funding arrangements for library legislation. This step is crucial to ensure that councils receive an increased level of library funding for peculiarity and in step with future costs of living increases. But without this reassurance, funding in our libraries can be easily diminished over time, leaving New South Wales councils to once again meet the shortfall. It's important to note that Renew Our Libraries Phase Two seeks to index the funding and protect the future funding for libraries provided by the New South Wales Government, regardless of which party is in power at any given time. So the recommendation is that council makes representation to local state members and relevant ministers in relation to the need for the sustainable state funding model for ongoing provision of public library services. Two, that the council write to the Honorary Don Harwin, Minister for Arts, and the Honourable Walt Secord, Shadow Minister for Arts, calling for bipartisan support for consumer price indexation of the state funding for New South Wales Public Libraries, as well as legislation of all elements of the 2019 to 20 to 2223 New South Wales State Market Model, and that council endorse the distributing of New South Wales Public Libraries Association's New South Wales Libraries Sustainable Funding advocacy information in council libraries, as well as involvement in it. Any actions proposed by the association, do not ask me to do a tongue twister at this point. Is there any discussion?
Just, Madam Mayor, I don't know if you agree with me, just to send a letter of thank you for local government in New South Wales for pushing very hard in regard of allocating funds for councils.
We can do that, that's fine.
Thank you.
Any other discussion?
Just to clarify something in point three, in terms of involvement in any actions, currently, are there any sort of particular actions that are proposed?
Not that I'm aware of, but I think it's more about lobbying at this point. Okay, any other discussion? I'll put it, those in favour, those against, declared carried unanimously? Okay, thank you. All right, well, the first item is on page 55.
I'd like to move a motion. Councillor Hachidi, go for it. Madam Mayor, I'd like to move a motion that council meetings continue to be on the last Wednesday of the month.
I'll second that, but I'll ask the George to put up the actual dates.
There might be issues with one meeting relating to our audit statements, but we usually review that. Okay, moved by councillor Ad, seconded by councillor Hachidi. Do you wish to speak to your motion, councillor Ad?
Yes, Madam Mayor, just a brief comment that it works fine the way it is. That's what the community is used to, that's what council staff are used to. I think it should remain the same way, thank you.
Okay. Any opposition? Any further speakers for? All right, I'll put it, those in favour, those against, carried. Was there any opposition to that motion? All right. Next item's on page 59.
Seconded, thank you.
Thank you, councillor Hachidi, seconded by councillor Sheldon. Any discussion? I'll put it, those in favour, those against, the carried. Next item's on page 68.
I have a motion that I would like to put up on the screen there. Essentially, it's the same as the one in the book with some bits tacked on.
Bits tacked on?
Counts, yep.
You can speak to it, speak to councillor.
There is a declaration of cities' coalition for digital rights. I'm happy to pull those up if you want, but essentially, cities around the world are adopting these five basic principles that ensure that the use of data is opened, used for the right reasons. That's basically it, and that, I guess, your data is your property and you have rights, and that councils should actually adhere to that. The reason I have put that up there is, if you've read the report, you'll see there's an issue there around a media report that I sort of first became aware of and raised with council staff, where Liverpool City Council was named in a list of agencies that had accessed metadata through Department of Home Affairs. Basically, no one knows. Yeah, I find that disturbing. So, let's nip that in the bud, make sure it doesn't happen again. Whether it did happen or not, no one can say, but if we have these strong policies and we adhere to this Charter of Rights, then I think that will make us a better council. Given we are also in this Western Sydney city deal with the connectivity, I think it's also important that that extends to our deal there, so...
Madam Mayor, I am happy to second.
Thank you, councillor.
Can I also ask if the move is happy to include WesRock in other organisations and actually kind of use WesRock as an advocacy platform to encourage, you know, other organisations to do that? Also, just some clarification, what was the outcome of a council supposedly accessing metadata? What was the context of that?
Maybe before we go any further, somebody should explain in layman terms what that means, just for some bloodites that happen to be sitting in the room, and I'm happy to put my hand up.
Mr White, would you like to explain metadata? And then, Mr Maguire, would you like to speak to the outcome of our attempt to find out whether anyone in the council had accessed metadata?
Joy of joys, thank you. Through the CEO, so metadata is data that sits behind documents. It's the stuff that you don't see, that can tend to identify things like who authored certain documents, when they were last modified, that sort of thing. It's, that's, yeah, sometimes, depends on the type of metadata you're talking about. What was the second part of the question?
To Mr Maguire, who investigated for us in relation to the apparent metadata.
Through you, CEO, the... I've conducted an extensive search through council's record systems to find any application or anything... I've conducted an extensive search through council's record systems to find any application or anything to do with an application to which, to the Department of Home Affairs, which is the department that handles applications on behalf of of third parties for access to metadata. I could find no record within our council systems of any such, uh, request or access, which would have to be a written form to that department. I also submitted a Freedom of, uh, um, Information application on behalf of council to the Department of Home Affairs, asking for them to, uh, provide any evidence, written evidence or records, to the effect that coun- uh, to council, uh, or council staff members had ex, had, um, put an application in for, uh, uh, access to metadata. That has to be a written application to the Department of Home Affairs. I received a, a reply from, which is, I think, consistent with what I put in the council report, that there was no such, um, there was no such application to the Department of Home Affairs. I don't know where the media reports come from, um, all I can say is to the best of my ability that, that, uh, I could find no evidence of anyone within council making that application to the Department of Home Affairs, and certainly the Department of Home Affairs advised me that, and that they had not received or had any record of any such application.
Thank you.
I just have a quick question, madam mayor.
Yes, councillor.
Can, do you just give us a, a brief explanation of the Declaration of Cities Coalition for Digital Rights?
Yep, um, so there's five, uh, principles. Number one, universal and equal access to the internet and digital literacy. Two, privacy, data protection and security. Three, transparency, accountability and non-discrimination of data, content and algorithms. Four, participatory democracy, diversity and inclusion. Five, open and ethical digital service standards. Um, the city of Sydney signed on to this, uh, a whole bunch of cities around the world, and I've also run it by David earlier in the week, and, and he said it, you know, it's consistent with the, the privacy policy, so.
And just one more question, if you may. How many cities do we have in our local area that have also adopted the Declaration of Cities Coalition for Digital Rights?
I don't know, but I know Sydney, Sydney has signed it, but we're, and we're obviously want to get all the Western Sydney, uh, councils on board as well.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question, if I may, thank you.
Yes, councillor Sheldon.
In relation to item three agrees, everyone should have access to understandable and accurate information about the technological algorithmic and artificial intelligence systems that impact their lives and the ability to question and charge unfair, biased or discriminatory systems. I'm not necessarily opposed, but does that have a cost implication for council? Everyone should have access to, uh, blah, 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 read it again if anyone wants me to. But I'm just concerned about whether it has a cost implication, and as I said, I'm not necessarily opposed, just curious.
I'll just ask the CEO to make a comment.
Mister White and I don't think there is any particular cost implication for anything we're currently using. Um, obviously, any technology that we introduced has a, a range of factors that we take into consideration, including um, privacy access, data access and, and financial implications, but I can't think of anything that, that that would impact on that's currently within our system. I'm happy to take it on notice and do a bit more of a sweep, but my, my initial answer is I don't think so.
Perhaps if I could ask you to do that, thanks.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Um, could I ask that we get a list of the other cities in our local area that have also signed up to this?
Other councils?
Yeah, of councils, thank you.
They'll take that on notice. Um, any other speakers against? Any other speakers for?
Just another question, if I may.
Yes, councillor.
In terms of previous discussions, I suppose through you to the CEO, to what extent is the entire subject matter of this appropriately described as a policy? Or as a standard? Particularly since we're trying to remove policies and create standards.
Uh, Mister Maguire can answer that, but it, it is a policy.
Okay, thank you. I'm going to put it, those in favour, those against, to carry it carried. Next item is on page seventy two.
Questions, if I can, mayor?
Yes, councillor.
Uh, through the CEO, two things. Firstly, do these, uh, risks appear on council's risk register as a line item?
Um, they, the, the VPAs as a whole appear on the risk register, but it, the risk register doesn't granulise down to into each specific VPA at this point. It can. There's no reason it doesn't, except that you tend to try and cluster things on a risk register.
Would you require a motion for that to happen?
No, not at all, I'm happy to, happy to do that. If that's, um, the general opinion of council, it's, it's, it's no, it's no issue, it's just granulising what's already there.
Okay.
In re, sorry, mayor, in reviewing that. And I only say this because obviously, we're here today, could be gone tomorrow, whether it's, you know, all of us. Um, and for someone to come in and then say, okay, what risk am I up for? If it's just VPAs, then it's searching. If there are known risks, I believe it should be, uh, at, at the forefront, so that someone can actually see it. Um, in relation to, on page seventy four, the bank stabilisation and path. From what I read there, that means we should see things happening next week, the week after. From what I read. Given that everything's okay, we just need to find where they're going to put a compound.
Mister Moore, do you want to, you, you had an update from that for me just today, so.
Through the CEO, um, I think the location of the compound is still just being finalised. And one other detail in relation to the surface treatment and design specs for the pathway on the riverbank. Um, when that's agreed, and, and, and I think we're very, very close to reaching an agreement there. Um, that can be written into the RAF, the RAF can be turned around um, or approved, and then works could commence. Um, so I don't think we'll get it next week or the week after, but it is possible that works could commence this side of Christmas, more likely in the new year, I think.
And if I may, can I ask, and I'm not sure if I should be, but is it, are we holding it back or are they holding it back? What's, where, where's the issue here?
I, I think it's just a matter of negotiating to, to, to a satisfactory outcome to both parties. I don't think there's, I don't think they would say there's any delay on our behalf. Um, Mister Moore and I were in a meeting with Coronation on another matter just recently, and they didn't express any concerns, they, they felt that, that was moving along fine, I believe that's fair and accurate to say.
So it's progressing. Okay.
Are we waiting on them now to come to us, or are we, they waiting on us to go back to them with a approval? So where, where, where are we at the moment?
Through the CEO, we, we've been negotiating the specifications for the design of that path. Our position on that was put to them at five PM this afternoon, a final position on that, or our latest position on that. If they agree, they simply have to update some drawings, it's back with us. The turnaround process, because all of the other issues in the RAF have been settled, will be very, very quick, so. Um, I wouldn't say there's any, any, that, that, that the time has been drawn out by either party particularly, it's just the, the process that you've got to get, go through to to, uh, satisfy both parties.
Okay, um, can we have a mover and a seconder, please? Moved by councillor Hall, seconded by councillor Sheldon. Any further discussion? I'll put it, those in favour, those against, to carry it carried. Next items on page seventy eight.
I'll move the recommendations for the book, madam mayor.
Okay, I think that was councillor Caliander.
I'll second it, madam mayor.
Councillor Rhodes. Okay, so we have a councillor Caliander and a councillor Rhodes.
Can I speak against then, mayor?
I just wait, you, ho- hold your horses.
Just joking.
All right. Uh, do you wish to speak to your motion, councillor Caliander?
Look, I'm pre, the report is pretty self-explanatory. Um, this item has been before council a number of times, and I think, um, this is the last step of the process, so I'm very happy to, to support it and make sure it gets, um, it gets on its way.
Okay. Any speakers against the motion? Any further speakers for the motion?
I have a question.
Question, yes.
How common is it for there to be, uh, heritage significant palm trees? Is that a common thing?
Mister Moore, would you like to speak to that, or you're welcome to take that one on notice?
Oh, well, I'm, I'm gonna cut. Sorry, I'm meaning a fandale. Um, it's not unusual to have a landscape item heritage listed.
Okay, all right.
So does, does it, sorry, through you, mayor, CEO, does anything stop us from unheritaging an item?
Unheritaging.
No, no, I'm being like.
No, I know, but I don't think you can.
Yeah, you, yes, you can, you can remove some, you can amend, you can amend the LEP to remove something from the local heritage item list via resolution of council. If it's on the state register, you can't do that.
Can we get a briefing from our heritage offered officer on why these palm trees are significant?
And for how long they've been on the heritage listed?
Uh, I, 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 I'm more than happy to provide the heritage officer with a briefing, but I suspect I can satisfy those questions via memo, so.
Whatever's easier.
Sorry, question.
Yes, councillor.
If council goes ahead with this now, then we receive a briefing on heritage. It'll then be hard to unheritage the inside trees, is that correct? Can we deal with it all in this proposal?
Through the CEO, I think you would need to direct us to go and investigate the unheritaging of those palms as part of a further LEP amendment. My concern, if you tried to wrap it in here, you would be delaying, um, the making of this LEP amendment. Um, which is, as in the paper before you, right, right at the final step, so you'd tend, that'd be the risk for you, that you'd be delaying the rezoning from happening. Um, therefore, it may be better to think about looking, investigating that and considering it as part of a separate LEP amendment.
Can I ask the mover and seconder maybe for a point three? Um, something along the lines of, um, should no risk in delay be evident that you unheritage those trees inside the boundary? I mean, you do your homework, you'll have a look at it, if you find there's going to be no risk?
No, it has to be via resolution of council, I'm sure.
Just through the CEO, I think it's important to note that there are no listed heritage trees within their site, the heritage trees are on the road reserve. So if you review the heritage report that the consultants have done, they're currently listed and have been, uh, since the two thousand and eight LEP. Uh, the trees within the site aren't listed, but they said that they have, um, uh, heritage value, but that doesn't mean they can't be removed. It's just a matter that needs to be considered in a future development application.
Okay. All right, I, I'm going to put it, those in favour, those against, I'll declare that unanimous. Thank you for the typist. Next item is page eighty five.
Happy to move that way, madam mayor.
Thank you, councillor Rhodes, seconded councillor Sheldon, was that you? Thank you. Do you wish to speak to your motion, councillor?
Yes, um, madam mayor, once again, it's pretty expla- ex- self-explanatory from the report that has been given to us, and, uh, I just feel that, um, we're moving along in the heritage area in council, and I, uh, I compliment Thomas Wheeler on the work that he is doing. Uh, prior to his engagement at this council, I think this was one area that council was not perhaps uh, as advanced as we are today. And, uh, I thoroughly endorse the work that he does. And, um, I think he's covered everything within the report adequately.
Thank you. Any speakers against? Any further speakers for?
Just a question, are there any palm trees in Memorial? I'm joking.
Thank you. Okay, I'm going to put it, those in favour, those against, to carry it carried unanimously. Next item is on page eighty nine.
I will move, uh, the recommendation.
Thank you, councillor Caliander, thank you, councillor Hachidi.
Just a question, if I may, madam mayor, to the mover and the seconder. Is there any appetite for increasing the amount that's referred to in relation to the trial? Putting in larger numbers, if you answered, no, that's the end of it, but we're only venturing a hundred thousand dollars in relation to this. You know, just query whether it might be a bit more realistic to put in a larger amount.
Just to clarify, does the councillor have a suggested or recommended amount?
Yeah, try doubling the numbers, so, number one, implement a trial scheme of fifty thousand dollars per annum rather than twenty five.
Mm-hmm.
So, the motion, as appears in the book, the, um, but increasing the numbers.
To fifty thousand?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, I think that's pretty self-explanatory.
I'm happy, I'm happy to incorporate that. Um, and can I also include, if the secondary is happy with this, um, include a point three that we undertake, um, a communications, um, sort of aspect to this, so that people are actually aware that these.
Communication strategy.
Yes, um, so that people are actually aware that these exist and how they can apply for them and, and how they can apply it to their particular situation, if that is appropriate.
Is the seconder happy with that?
Yeah, I, I am, just one comment, agree, no issue. Can I just make the comment that if we find that this is really exciting, everybody jumps on board, and we do go over the fifty, that it'd still be reported to council, I think it would be, uh, to allocate more funds, should they be required?
Councillor, I can, I can assure you of that because you need to approve any grant funding over a thousand dollars. So you need to have the full list of potential, of applicants, so you're able to make that decision. Council staff can make recommendations, but we can't make the approvals.
Yeah, I, sorry, I get that, but it's not closed shop if we get to the fifty K and then we say to them, you can't apply now, we're at its limit. Still make the application, then let council decide whether it wants to increase that fifty to something else.
I would suggest we put it out as an annual programme, so that you're actually looking at all the applications simultaneously at one time. Yep. That'll do it.
Yes. Thank you. Any other questions, queries? Is there any opposition? I'll put it, those in favour, those against, to carry it carried unanimously. I think the Christmas spirit has arrived. Page ninety four is the next.
I'll move that way, madam mayor.
I've got some questions.
Hold on, councillor Caliander, do we have a seconder? Thank you, councillor Penny. Yes, what is your question, councillor?
Um, first of all, thank you very much for the report, because it, uh, it helps us considerably in understanding some of the, uh, some of the requirements that we've got in our DCP and the other SEPs, and, um, I think that this document is very helpful to councillors to be able to do it, but my questions would be around the, uh, the matter of, like, if we look at on page ninety nine. Um, we can see that, uh, the review of the car parking spaces. Um, you know, just, just wondering if there is anything that council can do about the RHS SEP, the A H R, the RH SEP, sorry. Um, about the number of car spaces that they're permitting in that. I know, can we lobby government? Can we do anything about changing that? Uh, as you know, council, uh, Liverpool council has got a problem in, that most people feel that we're not providing enough park, car parking in these types of developments.
I'll ask the CEO to answer that for you.
Um, as, as you're aware, councillor, we, we have no statutory authority to change that SEP, however, you're absolutely right, we are able, we are able to lobby on that particular matter. Um, my guess is there'd probably be some other councils in this region who would also have similar concerns, so I'm more than willing to find out whether that's the case and see if a joined up campaign is, is useful.
I appreciate that. I wonder if we could, um, in view of that we've now got this document, whether it would be possible for council to hold a briefing men, uh, meeting so that all councillors can have a look at this and make other suggestions that we should lobby for at the same time. Would that be possible?
Uh, of course, any, it's always possible to brief councillors if that's what you wish.
Well, with the, uh, the councillor's permission who've moved this motion, if we could add in another point to that end, I would be very happy.
Okay. Is the mover happy with that?
Um, can I just clarify what the point two would read as?
That council hold a specific strategic planning meeting um, before the close date of our time that we're supposed to make amendments to our DCP and LEP. Doesn't have to go in there, but it would have to be timed in an appropriate way. So that councillors can make suggestions of things that they feel that our, that we could improve in this area. Can you work on it? I didn't have a motion actually formulated for it.
Can we take the word specific out, please?
Or strategic planning. Well, it is specific to this matter.
Councillor, you, I, I may be able to solve, someone having come up with this resolution, you actually do have a strategic workshop coming up on the DCP housekeeping amendments to, uh, uh, housekeeping changes to amendment fifty two. Um, I, I would suggest the smart thing is to just do the two of them simultaneously. Um, if councillors are already attending on, to, to discuss planning matters, it makes sense to do it at the same time if you're willing to do that. That should already be in the diaries, Mister George Jarquet, next Tuesday? Yep, okay.
Next Tuesday, and, uh, yeah, if that can go on the agenda for that, I'll be happy with that.
Okay, thank you. Any other discussion?
I'll speak against, mayor, and put it quite simply, you can't have your cake and eat it too. If we want affordable housing, something needs to give. We can't go out there and say we want more, more, more and more. We can't go out there and say, we want more, more, more and more, and then say, we also want affordable housing. Land costs money, it's as simple as that. If you're going to build something, you need to get a return. Otherwise, you don't build, you don't build it just for fun. People go out there and build to make money, that's just life. The harder you make it on these buildings to go up, I believe if things change and it's harder on people to actually deliver a product because you want wider streets, totally agree that in places we need wider streets, if you want more car spaces, if you want more of everything, and then on the other hand say, it needs to be affordable as well, well, something tells me we'll then miss out on both.
Thank you. Do we have a speaker for? Do you want to write a reply councillor?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I think, you know, this is obviously contentious area for a lot of people who bear the consequences of, of when poor planning or when some of these issues bite. So for example, councillor, councillor Rhodes raised the issue of, of car parking. Previously, we've seen that advocacy on this issue has moved government. So I think it's definitely worth advocating for the needs of our community. Yes, finances are a consideration and, you know, people invest in this to make money. But that doesn't mean that we, you know, abrogate our responsibility to our community to ensure that we have decent quality of life and that we, you know, have a community that people want to leave work and play in.
Thank you. I'm going to put it, those in favour, please raise your hands. Those against, the cleric carried. Yes, certainly. You'll have to be, it's in yellow. So two against and everybody else for. Right. The next item is on page one hundred and ten.
Seconded, thank you, Madam Mayor.
Sorry, councillor Sheldon and councillor Hachiti, was it? Thank you. Any opposition? I'll put it, those in favour, those against, cleric carried. Next item is on page one hundred and thirteen.
So just on that previous item, can I also just congratulate council staff for the work that they put into developing that strategy? I know it is an issue of concern for many in our community.
Okay, thank you, noted. Next items on page one hundred and thirteen.
I have a motion, Madam Mayor.
Yes, councillor Rhodes, what's your motion?
That council continue to make submissions and lobby. So number one, number two.
Are you saying it's the same as it's in the book, number one?
There is just one amendment that, that advocates, so number two. Number one, as it is, number two, advocates the New South Wales Government for local governments, SIA is to be prioritised, considerations relating to the gaming machine provisions and determination of the band assessment allocations. I just feel that a motion such as that will have greater impact than us going back in and banging our heads against things that we've tried to get through before. If we're, if we can get our local councils' SIA's to be considered as a priority in the determination of these things, I think that we're going to have a greater success. And so I would, that's, that's what I'd like to do, just one and two.
Yep.
Trying to prioritise our own SIA's so that that is given the greatest priority by whoever is determining it, and it would be the, the Liquor and Gaming Authority, probably. But if we can encourage that we get a greater priority on to the council telling them, if you do this, these are going to be the, the impacts on it and get decisions made on that, I think that we'd be serving the community well.
Thank you councillor Rhodes, you've spoken to your motion. Wait a minute, just needed a secondor.
I'll second.
Thank you councillor. Yes, question?
In any application to the, I'm not sure if anyone can answer this, to the gaming and liquor for that type of development, don't they need to submit a SIA?
Yes.
So the applicant will do one. Sorry, are we proposing now that council pay for one also? Because it says here that-
Through the chair.
Sorry, through your chair?
Yep.
For local governments' SIA's, so local government being, council does one as well?
Okay. Do you want the CEO to make a comment on the process?
There, there's nothing that can, would prevent us undertaking a social impact assessment. It's unusual. We would normally rely on the, an independent assessment being attached, submitted by the proponent.
I'm going to move as per the book.
Okay. Right.
I just have a question, Madam Mayor, in relation to the proposed motion. I'm just wondering whether councillor Rhodes' item two and the existing item two can be amalgamated so that you've got advocates to New South Wales Government for increased local government decision-making and for local governments' SIA's to be prioritised in considerations relating et cetera, et cetera. Does anyone think that flies?
I would be happy with that.
Okay, is the secondor happy with that councillor Caliander?
I missed that, can you repeat that?
Councillor Sheldon was suggesting that number two in the book goes into councillor Rhodes and your motion, so it's actually incorporated.
You could do both at the same time.
Yeah.
I now withdraw my foreshadowed.
Okay. Foreshadowed withdrawn.
I just have a question in relation to this. I noticed that in, in reference to the comprehensive social impact assessment, it, it notes that every development application to submit a comprehensive social impact assessment. Is there any point at which there is a trigger for which accumulative impact of these is assessed? Because it's easy to kind of assess everything in isolation and it looks fine. But then, once you have a number of these put together, the cumulative impact of them obviously is exaggerated.
Yep. That's a good question. Would you like to tell the councillors that, please, Mr Moore?
Dr Jackson, can you answer that, please?
Through the CEO, the policy revisions that are made in the following reports suggest that cumulative impact is one of the issues that's taken into consideration this time around. The policy will include that if adopted.
Okay, that's good. Any opposition?
Yes, mayor.
Yes, councillor.
In order in keeping with the Christmas spirit, I'll speak against.
Yep.
We talk about cutting red tape, about doing this, about affordable housing, yeah, let's make bigger. We, we talk about all these wonderful things to make life easier for everyone. Yet we want to introduce now at the cost of the rate payer, yes, it's for the rate payer and whatnot. There's a development application process that's adopted by government that says, if you want to do this, this is what you need to do. It's then assessed by an independent panel or the government or whoever it is, and then they make a decision. I think council should focus on, yes, it's very important to our community that we look after their interests. But if the process is the process, let the process happen without us wanting to get our fingers into everything. We just continue to say, we want to cut red tape, yet we keep introducing things that make it harder for people. There's a process, stick with the process. If it works, it works. If it doesn't, government needs to change the process.
Any other speakers for?
I will speak for. The process isn't working. This went through without us sort of finding out about it and that's what the point of this motion is.
Okay, thank you. Any other speakers against?
Just a question, Madam Mayor, was councillor Rhodes intending for paragraph three to become part of her motion? We've only got paragraphs one and two on her motion at the moment.
Councillor Rhodes, can you clarify?
Reading it now. The public interest is in the four month form. Yes, just include that, yep.
Include.
Thank you.
So for Susan, which bit do you want included councillor Rhodes? Three, your three will become a four.
No, just so we've got one, two and three, as it is now there.
Yep. And number three in the original motion sits where?
Do you want to join that number three with an and, considers a policy position?
Doesn't really matter councillor.
Okay, happy with that.
All right, I'm going to put it, those in favour, those against, the cleric carried.
Yes, please.
Next item is on page one hundred and nineteen.
I'll move that way, Madam Mayor.
Have an amendment.
Yes, councillor Hachiti wants to be recorded as voting against that last motion.
Thank you.
Councillor Caliander, seconded councillor.
I'll second that, thanks.
Madam Mayor, I have an amendment.
Hold on a moment, councillor Sheldon's moving seconded. Yes councillor, what's your amendment?
I have an amendment to that, which is one as is and a new part two. I actually discussed it at, at the strategic panel meeting and I spoke to the director on this. What, I think it's coming up. I'll read it out anyway. As part of the regular internal cycle of review of the social impact assessment policy every two years, council is to engage a recognised independent industry expert to undertake a peer review to ensure that the policy promotes best practice and is kept up to date and in line with changes to relevant planning guidelines. And three as is. The only other issue with this is that we need to allocate resources to this. I'm not sure how you go about that.
Well, I would suggest you delegate to the CEO. And I would also suggest your number two should be number three because that's about going out to the community and ensuring that they understand what's happening. So you're including a new number two and number two becomes three. Are the movers and the seconders happy to adopt that?
Very happy with that.
I can stand for that, thanks.
Thank you guys. I think that's pretty clear, any opposition? I'll put it, those in favour, those against, the cleric carried. We're treating it as a motion, councillor Hall, and not as a separate amendment, so. Next item is on page one hundred and twenty-four.
Just a quick one before it's moved, was any, I'll move it, that's fine.
Thank you.
I'll second it.
Thank you.
I know we didn't receive any formal submissions. Were any inquiries made?
There were actually quite a number of downloads. Mr Swansky, can you, can you remember how many downloads we got of the Collingwood House? I actually asked Mr White that so he might be able to pull it up if you can't remember.
I believe around ten, twelve, if not more.
We, we've, twenty-five, twenty-five. So it was downloaded by twenty-five different individuals or companies for review.
Do, do we, sorry councillor, do we, with the twenty-five, they're obviously identified who they are?
No.
Identified, okay. I'm just trying to get an understanding of twenty-five downloaded. Was there maybe some interest there, but then they read something and how do we, and we can't engage with them? Does that metadata thing that we spoke about earlier pick that up? I mean, how do we, how do we, sorry, how do we try to, if there's twenty-five downloads, people aren't interested, but obviously maybe some concern? Is there something, I'd really like to see Collingwood moved on and something good happen with it. Not, I'm not the minister of heritage here, but Collingwood is, you know, part of our history.
It's delightful to see your enthusiasm for heritage properties. The fact that we've gone out to tender and received no requests really actually opens up more the opportunity for me to go and negotiate with potential interested parties. And in fact, I think number three makes up that, gives me that direction as well.
Yeah.
Yes councillor.
I'll ask this in a form of question. But I think what councillor Hachiti's getting at is if there's one or two sticking points as to why those twenty-five passed, if we were able to find those out, we could perhaps address them.
I, I can, well, I can't, I don't know who the twenty-five parties are. Generally, when it's a tender, if there's one or two sticking points or difficulties, they will contact us and, and either put in a non-conforming and make it clear why it's non-conforming, or at least come back and ask questions. I, I see your points and I'm trying to think through how I can potentially do that maybe at a stakeholder group of places like Ventura and stuff who do this professionally to try and seek some guidance from them might be effective.
Madam Mayor, if I may, I just have a question.
Yes.
In regards to three, does that mean that the CEO might decide to put it out to tender? Does that cover that, might decide, I mean, to put it out to tender again?
Potentially, yes. Well, at this point in time, as the, as Collingwood House stands, we didn't get any interest. As we start doing rolling upgrades to it over, you know, a number of capex years, it may well get interest again. And then I think it would probably be prudent to put it out to tender again.
Just a question, with the, the actual tender that went out, was that limited to commercial enterprise that were open or was it community organisations that could as well?
It was a general tender of Mrs Swansky, that's, that's correct, wasn't it? It was any opportunity, special interest to use the, use the facility?
It was mainly commercial, but we were open to others, but we asked for commercial opportunities.
Mm-hmm, okay.
I know thousands of people watched the streaming video of this. So if you're watching and you did download the tender, please get in contact with council.
Okey-dokey, thank you. We have a mover and a secondor and we've had some fairly interesting discussion. I'm going to put it, those in favour, those against, the cleric carried unanimously.
Move the one on page one, two, eight.
Seconded.
Thank you.
Question.
Yes.
Once one, two, three and four are done, it's gone out to tender and it comes back, does the CEO sign it off or does council sign off the final awardee?
Yeah, it depends on the dollar value. I have delegation up to two million, but you can call in that delegation in terms of specific tenders if you wish to. I, I don't know at this point because we haven't gone out to tender.
Can I put a point five if the mover and secondor are in agreeance? That's once one, two, three, four, you've done all your tendering and everything else, that it comes back to council for final sign-off?
It's fine with me.
Yep.
Councillor Rhodes, councillor Hagerty, are you happy with that? That the matter returns to council once the one, two, three and four have been satisfied. I'm going to put it-
So just a quick question, do we have approximate timeframe of when that might come back?
It's in the minister's hands. So I wouldn't hold our breath. Okay, I'm going to put it, those in favour, those against, the cleric carried. Next item is on page one hundred and thirty-five.
Move that way, thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you councillor Ballute and councillor Sheldon. Any discussion?
It's all right.
I'm going to put it, those-
I just noticed in passing, Madam Mayor, that the interest income's been going down over the last few months, but I just presume that's a sign of the times and it's going to be a feature of these reports as time goes by.
You're, you're completely correct there councillor.
Thank you. Any opposition? I'll put it, those in favour, those against, cleric carried unanimously. Next item is on page one hundred and forty-six.
Move that way.
Seconded.
Seconded.
Seconded in several places, councillor Hagerty and councillor Rhodes. Any discussion?
I have a couple of questions which I know the answer to, but I'm just going to ask them anyway. Can I still confirm that Cirillo Park is in this year's budget?
Yes, I can confirm that councillor. With the intention to start works, Mr Otteau, I believe around ninth of December. And the mayor's office is in conversation with sovereign districts about the official sod turning. I met with Gino myself today to confirm that.
And that date has slipped?
We've had some complexity on the site. That means we've had to go into further negotiations with the contractor. But Mr Otteau, unless, unless there's something that I haven't heard, it's all resolved at this point in time.
Thank you.
All right, I'm going to put it, those in favour, those against, the cleric unanimous. Next item is on page one hundred and sixty-nine.
I will, hold on a second. I will move that way, but I do have some questions.
And I will second.
Thank you. What are your questions?
I know in the original motion it had, my mistake, it had a bit of a get out clause phrase they called such as, won't make that mistake again. So you've engaged with the local area health district, but what about the taves and universities?
Yeah, that, that's a, that's a question for City Economy. I, I'll have to take that one on notice. I would be surprised if they haven't, partly because the lip brings together all of those parties as well. But if they haven't done it, I'm, I'm sure that they do do it.
And one more. Ultimately, I think it would be more advantageous if it was easier for bodies like the local area health district to, to, I guess, have a preferencing poll. I think that's going to be too hard. The other way to do it is probably easier is for us to assist local businesses in getting on the state's preferred tender list. Do we do that? Do we have a scheme to do that?
Yes, we do. Interestingly, we've, we've done some work in that space, working with local SMEs about how they get into government tendering. The position that's funded, one of the positions, the position that is funded through the intermodal rates money, their specific role is to work to create relationship between not just the intermodal, but some of the other large infrastructure projects and local SMEs. So they will have a, a real focus on that as well. But we've done, we've done it in the past too. It's, it's a kind of core business of City Economy.
I have a question.
I have a question.
Yes, councillor Rhodes.
I'm, I'm a little bit confused by the defining local suppliers within the standards because within the old policy, we had the local pretty well defined. Can somebody explain that?
Mr White, can I ask you to speak to that, please?
Yes, through the CEO. As you might recall from the briefing councillor, the non-struck-through writing is what the policy is intended to be. And this, the problem we've had here is this policy change was proposed before the standards and framework changed at the last meeting. So we've had to go through and change it again because all those definitions of what a local purchaser is and the steps we'll take fall now within the standards, not within the policy. So we've defined the policy and pared it back. So all of that material that you see in there that's struck through that defines local providers, that will be in the standards, will be in the standards.
Thank you.
Question, does this need to go on exhibition, given that it's a policy? And the advice previously was that we require things to go on exhibition?
Mr White?
Yeah, Mr McGuire, you're probably the best positioned to answer that.
Through you, CEO, I don't see any need for that to occur. Council may wish to go in that direction if they say resolved, but there's no requirement in the act or in, or in the regulation.
I just asked because previously we moved a amendment to a policy that affected only councillors and we were told that it should go out on exhibition.
Mr White, do you want to just provide some clarification there?
Yeah, so through the CEO, there are certain statutory policies that council's required to have. When you, when you amend those policies, especially when they're captured in the Local Government Act, there is a legislative requirement that they be exhibited, especially where the change is significant. This is not a policy that council's required to have because this, all this does is put a framework around how council applies the regulations as, as, under the local government regs. This is not a mandatory legislative policy. Council is asking us through this policy to take a certain approach to how we apply the regulations to purchasing. It's not a mandatory policy under the legislation.
That said, there's nothing to prevent it going out on public exhibition. We, we often put things out on public exhibition that we're not required to, so we can seek community feedback on them.
Okay, I'm going to put it those in favour, those against, cleric carried unanimously. Page one hundred and eighty-nine.
Move it.
I've got some questions.
Councillor Sheldon, who was the seconder? Thank you councillor Hiddit. Yes, what is your question?
Just, I know that I did find it at one stage, but what's the highest interest rate the council is currently receiving on any one of their investment portfolios?
Mr Nadan, are you able to answer that?
Through the CEO, sorry, through the CEO. I think the ansais and the investments, the attachment to the investment report that we looked at, there are few that we, that we invested in and we are getting around four, four percent.
Four percent.
And they are actually due to mature in, in a few months' time from now.
That's okay, four percent. And what is the total cost for council for electricity supply? Saw two figures in there, one for electricity and then one for heat and something or other. Is that combined or what is the annual cost of electricity to council?
Through the CEO, I probably have to take this on notice.
Take it on notice.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm going to put it those in favour, those against, cleric carried. I'd say unanimously. Next item is the committee's unconscious councillor Rhodes has mentioned she has an interest in committee O1, so we'll obviously take that out. Are they happy to do them all global?
Madam Mayor, if I may, first of all.
Just wait a sec, are we happy for the rest of the committees to be dealt in global and just deal with this number separately?
Yes. I'll move that way.
Thank you councillor, so moving the rest. And seconder, thank you councillor Hall. I'll put it those in favour, those against, cleric carried. Now councillor Rhodes, number one.
Yeah, just a, a change to the minutes as they're written. Where it says councillor Rhodes requested, it should have been councillor Rhodes suggested that a member of the committee proposed the motion for a member of the South West Sydney Tourism Task Force to be invited to present at a future committee meeting. I am not a member of that committee and at the time I did make note of the fact that I wasn't a member and that it would require a member to propose the motion if they were so, to consider the, the request.
Madam Mayor, I'll move adoption with that amendment.
Thank you councillor Sheldon.
And another thing that I've got to change, I also advised that Peter Hall was an apology at that meeting. And it hasn't, hasn't been.
I'll move adoption of that as well, thank you, madam mayor.
So councillor Sheldon amending the minutes with those following suggestions and we have a seconder. Councillor Hall, I'll put it those in favour.
Just quick, sorry mayor, just congratulations to everyone involved in some of these events that are taking place. I mentioned in the, in the report. I mean, I think that's the second or third congratulations from me tonight, so something's going on.
Probably the pink tie councillor.
Pink tie and I'm out of frogs. But Liverpool on a roll was absolutely amazing. I missed out on last year's one, but if you had thrown me into that setting without knowing where I was, there was no way in the world, I would have guessed, that you're in Carnes Hill. It was that good. It was enjoyable, I don't think there was any complaints from anyone. The only thing can I suggest is still a lot of people didn't know about it. And it was through, it was funny through councillors' Facebook pages that a lot said that's how we knew about it. And even some people in the, that live local said we weren't aware until we saw all these people gathering. Although everyone was setting up for three days and everyone drove past it probably a million times. But it was a, a fantastic event. And can I make the suggestion that we give consideration in 2020 that we look at doing a New Year's Eve celebration in that area, if it fits? Obviously, there's cost implications. Chipping Norton Lakes is becoming well-attended. Obviously, there's some costs and we have to manage the budget properly, but if we can keep people out of there and in that area and spread the love, it might actually work. But I'll leave that up to council staff to work out if it is, if it is beneficial.
Thank you, we've got a mover and a seconder, I'm going to put it those in favour, those against, cleric carried. The next items are questions with notice and the first one is civic place under the name of councillor Tiddy.
Thank you and I thank you for the email that was received a couple of days ago and I'll leave it at that for now if I can.
Okay.
So thanks for that one.
The next one's in your name as well councillor Tiddy.
Thank you for that.
And the next one's in your name councillor Haggerty.
Can I, given that we are going into closed session, can I move that that be dealt with because of section ten, I should know this now?
Ten-two.
Ten-two A, is it? E, B, C?
There's legal matters to be considered.
That one.
Yeah.
Seconded, thank you, madam mayor.
Thank you, so that be moved into confidential?
Thank you.
No worries. I'll put it those in favour, those against, cleric carried. The next item is on page two, six, six, in the name of councillor Hagerty.
Pretty straightforward, I think. They're called granny flats, sometimes grannies live in them, they don't have much money. Can we look at ways for them to make paying contributions a little easier?
Okay, thank you. The next item's on page two, six, seven, in the name of councillor Hagerty.
Yep, just my regular check-in with our friends at the state government about Edmondson Park railway, commuter car park.
Okay then, the next one is a check-in on feral cats.
Oh, apparent, I, I was reading in the minutes, some people refer to them as community cats. I'm not one of those people, I am not one of those people. But, look, in this term of council, we have solved a number of very troubling problems that we didn't think we could solve, trolleys, narrow streets. I think it's time we tackle the scourge of feral cats and that's all I'll say about that.
So you're waiting on your answers, thank you. Next item is in councillor Caliander's name on page two, seventy, and she's waiting for the answers.
Happy to wait for the answers.
Happy to wait for the answers, thank you. Any presentations?
Yeah, I've got a brief one, madam mayor.
Thank you.
I wish to advise council that at the West Rock board meeting, the fourteenth of November, I was re-elected as treasurer of the West Rock board. I look forward to continuing council's representation. During my time of council representation, I have never missed a meeting and have lobbied for infrastructure in western Sydney, paying particular attention to south west Sydney, with one of my passions being the need to link the cities in the west city, in west Sydney, not only to each other but also to the new airport. I've successfully managed to reintroduce the Leppington Spur continuation to the new airport as a West Rock lobbying priority to the state and federal governments. I continue to support West Rock in lobbying for the Bangstown line to Liverpool. New stations and rail rapid transport links and service infrastructure that services the links and links the western city in a similar way as the inner city suburbs of Sydney is infrastructure that is required not only to grow the area but also to create and provide access for much-needed job opportunities. The new stations and transportation infrastructure links would also alleviate the parking congestion currently experienced at many of Liverpool train stations. I've participated in many of the West Rock conferences and events and advocated not only for the best interest of Liverpool council but for the western city. Director Peter Patterson attended the last West Rock meeting representing the CEO and at the conclusion of the meeting, one of his comments, he said to me, you're no shrinking violet. You've had a lot to say and I do. I serve and will continue to serve this council and Liverpool passionately. I thank council for giving me the opportunity to do so.
Can I commend councillor Rhodes for her work at West Rock?
Thank you. And it's not the last council meeting, we're doing well. Okay, thank you so much. The next item is NOM O1 in the name of councillor Hagerty.
Move that way.
Do you wish to speak to your motion?
Uh, yeah, I do.
Madam, I have amendments, sorry.
Oh, yep, basically, you know, as, as explained in the, in the background there, some of the experts in this area, from spokesman for the NRMA to the former police commissioner, have spoken against this proposal. I know that it only is a proposal at this stage, but the rationale has long been, ever since I introduced around speed cameras, that they are there for safety, not revenue raising. It's not about catching people, it's about encourage them to slow down if they happen to be speeding. And I think that is consistent with the principle we have here at council. I know that if cars are parked on the verge, for example, a letter goes out saying, next week, if your car's on the verge, we will find you, we don't come out and find them. And I think that is an important, unless their car is on the verge. But we also have that, you know, across the board, you know, we, we have a, we have a culture in this country of we give people a warning and then we, we slap them on the wrist. And if we were to take away the speed, or if the RMS were to take away the speed signs, that would amount to unfairly trapping people. And I think we should do the right thing, consistent with all the other fines and things we do here, and put up signs where those signs used to be.
Well, let's just wait and see, shall we? Can we have a seconder for that motion, please?
I'll second.
Thank you councillor Caliander. Now councillor Hall, you said you have an amendment?
Yes, I have an amendment. And one is that light camera infringements be restricted to demerit points only and carry no financial fines. Two, direct the CEO to write to the local government of New South Wales, Wesrock, Ezrock and neighbouring councils, Liverpool state and federal members requesting their support for this motion. I'll speak on my, on my reason for the amendment.
I'll second those amendments.
Thank you.
Just a point of order. Do we have, would we have to write to the state government about those infringements? Like, yeah.
It would.
So can we just word it that way, please?
Yep. Are you happy to join the two together councillor Hall?
Yeah, well, yeah, happy to combine powers here, yes. Anything that gives drivers a fair go, I'm, I'm all for it. I have, well, it depends.
You speak, okay, so the motion's incorporated your amendment. Councillor Hagerty's happy to do that and I imagine the seconder is too. So you can speak to the motion which includes your amendment.
I have a question.
Yes, hold on, no, just hold your horses, councillor Hall, you wish to speak to it?
My only concern is that I actually support the removal of the, of the warning signs. I think what's happening is by giving warnings, you're actually biasing the system. It means currently, if there are warning signs and people know about them, they're going to slow down and obviously don't go through red lights. Sadly, I've seen many people go through red lights and I've been involved in an accident where someone went through a red light and I had green. And I believe that giving them warnings beforehand is going to alert them to a problem, that they may get fined, where if there are any other traffic intersections, control lights, where there are no warning signs, it means, oh, well, you can go through that and risk getting, you know, getting, not getting fined. I think that's wrong, it's a safety issue. I believe the signs shouldn't be there and if you go through red lights, you deserve to get caught. And if you're worried about the fact that it is a revenue-raising thing, well, let's remove the, the fines, but leave the demerit points. And I think if you leave the demerit points there, people will have a greater respect for losing their demerit points and losing a licence than paying a fine. And in any case, a fine is discriminatory. If you're a rich person, you can easily afford that. If you're not a rich person, you may not be able to afford that. If you're a billionaire, you know, a thousand dollars is like nothing. And, and you may, may not like that, but that is what it is. It's discrimination, it depends on your social standing as to whether or not you can afford that. Anyway, thank you.
Can I foreshadow a motion which I think councillor Hall might be happy with, madam mayor?
Well, the motion that councillor Hagerty and seconded by councillor Caliander has incorporated councillor Hall's motion or amendment, so it's one motion. Councillor Haggerty, did you want?
Well, from councillor Hall's expression there, isn't he expressing concern?
Well, that's not in the words of his amendment. I appreciate what he said, but he's not actually talking about what.
Well, would it be best that the amendment was made a foreshadow motion?
Well, it can be, it's against the original motion. If he includes the words, I oppose, I, you know, support the signs being removed, that is in there, then it actually is in opposition to the motion as put by councillor Hagerty and it's not an amendment.
So we could make it a foreshadow motion, is what I'm saying?
Yeah.
So can I?
Can we do that? You're going to foreshadow a foreshadowed, so just hold your horses there?
No, I.
No, not you councillor Rhodes, councillor Haggerty has got one as well. Okay, so councillor Hagerty, we're not incorporating councillor Hall's amendment into your motion because he's opposing the signs being removed. Okay, so we have a foreshadowed motion as put by councillor Hall and seconded by councillor Rhodes, which is before you. We also have the motion as made by councillor Hagerty and seconded by councillor Caliander, which is in the book. I am actually.
I withdraw my seconding of that amendment. It, it, it doesn't make sense to me if you, the amendment is saying in one hand that he supports the removal of the signs.
Councillor, I've already sorted that out.
Have you?
Thank you, yes. So now the reality is we're going to put the motion.
Sorry mayor, can I make a suggestion to councillor Hall once we see he's foreshadowed?
It's the same, it's his amendment. Can we see the foreshadowed motion? It's the amendment, it's, it is put up.
All right, so can I suggest to councillor, can I make a suggestion?
Yes, you can debate the, how about you debate the original motion as put by councillor Hagerty and seconded by councillor Caliander, raising the issues of what you would suggest in the foreshadowed motion?
In relation to councillor Hagerty's, do not agree whatsoever with it.
Right.
I support the removal of the signs and after getting advice from my two advisers, my son and daughter, said what a wonderful idea if you remove it because dad, you'll probably be a little bit more careful everywhere. I am when they're in the car. And people won't know when they're going to get booked, so the chances are that they will take it easy all the time and we won't see accidents and we won't see people killed. So in relation to the actual signs, I support the removal. So I speak against his, but in councillor Hall's, I'll speak against his as well because. because it still says that we support the removal of the signs, where he just said that he doesn't-
Yes, he does support the removal.
Direct CEO.
So it's correct.
He supports the removal of the signs?
Correct.
No, councillor Harle's, the way I read it there, direct the CEO to write the minister of transport concerning concerns with the removal of the signs.
It's not right, no.
No, that's not correct because-
Yeah, that's what I was trying to-
We just need to tidy that up.
So would councillor Harle consider writing to the minister of transport, supporting the removal of the signs? And then a point two, then in order so it's not seen as just revenue raising, we then lobby for demerit only, no fine attached to those fixed speed cameras?
Absolutely, councillor.
Okay, so the foreshadowed motion now will incorporate the debate as put by councillor Hiddity. Okay, so the original motion, you have the floor councillor Hagerty in the right of reply.
Thank you, madam mayor. We should do whatever we can to prevent accidents and acknowledge that councillor Harle was in an accident. We've all been in accidents and we all know people that have been in accidents. I've lost a cousin to an accident. So you prevent accidents, they're expensive, they cause injury, they cause death. You don't take a punitive approach, you give people warnings and you try to get them to slow down. That's why we have speed humps, that's why we have those yellow diamond shaped signs that say, "Go thirty kilometres or forty kilometres around this bend." The logical conclusion of what's being proposed by the state government here is that we get rid of, we get rid of traffic lights, we get rid of all road signs because all road signs are there to encourage or discourage a certain kind of behaviour. So we want to discourage a certain kind of behaviour here and that's speeding and that's currently what they do. And if the state government removes these signs, we should do, we should do the right thing by the drivers of Liverpool and we should put our own signs there.
Thank you councillor. Okay, I have the right of reply has been taken, I'm going to put the motion as moved by councillor Hagerty and seconded by councillor Caliander. Those in favour, please raise your hands. Six, the motion stands and the other motion, the foreshadow dies, thank you. Moving on to the next one is 275.
Madam mayor, I would like to rejig my motion on the basis of the CEO's comments in that report.
Excuse me, please, councillor is speaking. Go ahead councillor Rhodes.
Yeah, I'd just like to rejig, revise the motion on, to take into consideration the CEO's comments. And do you want the revised motion first?
Yes, please, I would like the revised motion.
The revised motion is that council holds an internal briefing and also invites West Rock to participate as a part of that briefing meeting, either before, after or during that briefing, to present the power purchase agreement they are currently negotiating with Gen X Power. And two, the briefing meeting be held in time for the matter to possibly be considered at the December council meeting in order to meet the West Rock deadline for the offer. Now, the reason why, let's be clear about this, I'm not trying to convince councillors on any matter at all, but I have some concerns that there seems to be some misunderstanding about, from my understanding of the West Rock brief on this matter and some of the CEO's comments, because from the briefing that I received, I was told it's not necessary for councils to break their contracts with existing suppliers and I was told it's not necessary for councils to erect separate metres in order to participate in the West Rock initiative, as all the solar power from this initiative is distributed through the normal electricity supply grid. So it's my understanding that this is an opportunity for Liverpool council to cut their electricity cost and support their commitment to renewable energy targets without breaking any current contract suppliers, without the need to erect any new metres and there is no risk of surge or lack of supply, other than that of what currently we might get through our normal grid system. So on the basis of that, I wouldn't like council to have any misunderstanding about what the West Rock initiative is all about. And, you know, in accordance with her comments, I think that, yes, an internal briefing for councillors, but I think it's also, you know, the motion that I've put is compatible with that idea and, you know, that we have an internal meeting held first, followed by the West Rock presentation and questioned then, so that all councillors and everybody is on the same page as to what the actual West Rock initiative actually is. So I would advise or I would like councillors to agree that, yeah, let's have a meeting and find out what it's all about.
Thank you councillor, so you've spoken to your motion, do you have a seconder? Councillor Harle, thank you. Any other speakers?
I'd like to speak in favour of this motion, madam mayor.
Yes, councillor.
I think it's fantastic that councillors are now in favour of receiving briefings after voting to not receive a briefing last month. So that's excellent, it's a good way forward and we're making progress and that is excellent.
Thank you councillor for your interesting comments. Any speakers against the motion?
Sorry, just a question, what was, what did we argue against getting a policy on?
I, look councillor, we're not-
Can I just ask through you chair?
I wouldn't have a clue at this point.
On the wood, councillor Wood, councillor-
On the, okay, let's move forward, please. Okay, we've got a mover and a seconder, we've had two speakers for, any speakers against? I'm gonna put it, those in favour, those against. Cleric carried, thank you. The next item is on confidential 01 on page 574 of your confidential documents. Please remember this is in confidence, so if you are going to comment or debate, please be aware this is a confidential issue. So have we got a mover?
Can I, and again, sorry, we've discussed this a couple of times, as a councillor, I can't direct staff, but here you're asking me in 1B to do it. How is that?
How is that possible?
Yeah, I mean, I can't stop staff from actually doing this, yet you're telling me, sorry, not you, sorry, the report is stating, that we direct staff to do that.
Mm-hmm.
Essentially, you're directing me councillor. I have similarly had queries about these and asked why this can't just be delegated to me. It can't unfortunately, because I don't see why you need to see this. I think this is a matter under which, that I could do under delegation, but unfortunately that's not the view of the New South Wales government.
So is it legal then for council to move a motion directing you not to issue a fire safety order?
It, yes, I believe so. I want to take that on notice and get some nuanced information for you rather than just blow it out in answer.
Okay councillors, can we have a motion, please? Thank you councillor Hiddity, seconded.
I'll second.
Thank you councillor Caliander, I'll put it, those in favour, those against, cleric carried. Next item on page 581 of your confidential document.
I'll second that, madam mayor.
Thank you councillor. Yes, just be aware it's in confidential councillor.
That, this is an, this is a drainage easement we're talking about?
Mm-hmm.
And what I'm concerned about, is it an open drain? Can we put in a GPT and who has to maintain the easement and the drain?
Thank you, I'll ask the CEO.
I think I'm gonna have to take those questions on notice councillor Harle, unless Mr Orto is able to answer, no, we'd need to take it on notice, yep.
If it assists, madam mayor, the motion's only in relation to the granting of the easement, not the design and construction and appearance, which are separate issues for another time.
It's at step one. Okay councillors, I'm gonna put it. I'm not gonna put it, yes I am, I've gotta move for a second, I apologise. Those in favour, those against, cleric carried. Next items on page 585.
I'll move that way, thank you, madam mayor.
Thank you councillor Shelton, seconded.
I'll second it.
Somebody is leaving the room. Oh, well, hold on, we'll wait. You can go up the stairs behind the curtain.
We'll go round, councillor.
Excuse me, who's seconding this particular?
I'll second, madam mayor.
We've got several seconders. I think we'll give councillor Hiddity a turn, he's been very quiet tonight. All right, is there any discussion? I'll put it, those in favour, those against, cleric carried. The next motion is to move into confidential to deal with question 03 and confo 4. I will move the council into that confidential session under section 10, 2A, G, A, G, anyway, section 2, 10, 2, as there be legal matters and other matters to be discussed. So the meeting will be now closed. And we'll have a five minute recess, so I can go to the bathroom. And we'll have a five minute recess. So I can go to the bathroom.
The reporters' contact conduct in the opinion of the council does not warrant censure. Note, the strong preference of council is for council rose to apologise and the office of local government be advised of the resolution and encourage and promotes respectful behaviour as per council's code of conduct. I'm being put to the meeting, it was carried, and the meeting is now closed.
Sorry ma'am, before you close the meeting?
Meeting is now closed.
Before you close it?
What?
Just in case everyone's read the motion.
I read it out.
Yeah, I just want to...
Just, just...
Clarify, um, madam mayor, just for number three.
Madam mayor, may I say, I apologise.
Madam mayor, if I may, I think for number three it needs to be that council encourages and promotes...